This conference will now be recorded.
Before we start the meeting and approve the agenda, I just want to notify any guests that we have to please keep their, your computers on mute. And before we vote on anything, I will, if you need to make a comment or anything, you know, wave or something, and I'll try to identify you, and then you can say any comments you'd like to make. So if we have no other questions, I guess the first thing we always do is to approve the agenda. Is, does anyone have any questions, additions, concerns of any items on the agenda? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I'll second. This is Maggie.
Okay, Maggie, Sean beat you to the punch, so I'm gonna give him the second.
Okay.
So, like we do on all votes electronically, we do a roll call vote. So we'll start with Councilman Seiler.
Aye.
Councilman Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Nicolai says aye, so the agenda passes as presented. First item is, we have Chris Cabot here to give us an update on our street project. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm assuming you can hear me okay?
I can.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I'll go ahead. I would assume that everybody is aware that the road closure and detour did go into place this morning. And I thank everybody for the patience on that. Obviously, our intent was to try to keep the road open as long as possible, obviously because of some delays that were, the contractor was dealing with with the railroad. So obviously, that's full steam ahead at this point. This week won't look like a whole lot happening because we're basically getting the site prepared to do the underground crossings on the railroad, which will be taking place next week. The detour obviously is in place. Traffic control is mostly all in place. There's some signs that are missing. And there'll be probably a little bit of adjustments or a little bit of massaging that'll take place as we see what's working and not working. So I just, I guess, want to encourage everybody a little impatience maybe. If there's any ideas that you'd like us to look at, please let us know. But the big thing is we're trying to make sure we, everybody knows they can still get downtown, they can get down to the businesses. So we want to make sure we can get rid of any confusion related to that. Still trying to make sure people are getting the word. I would be, I'd be surprised if there's not a lot of folks that live on the corridor or have businesses on the corridor that still are not either on an email list or getting text messages. Our inspector, John Voight, has gone up and down the block. He's working his way west to east, trying to handing out flyers, making sure, reminding people to sign up for the text message alerts, et cetera, just so people can stay informed. Right now, that text message service, if any of you have signed up for it, we only have 46 subscribers so far. Again, I don't know how many are, folks are on the email list, but I want to say there's probably about 60 on the corridor, but we have a lot more folks than that. Well, over 100, so. We are holding weekly call-in, go-to meetings for the property owners every Thursday at 2:00. And we've only had a few callers so far, but again, there wasn't a lot happening. I think as things are starting to happen and there's some inconveniences created or questions created, we'll start getting a few more people calling in on that. So. I guess with that, that's probably about it, other than just to give you an idea what's kind of work's going to be happening this week. They're really, like I said, they're getting, removing pavement, they're getting the water, water mains cut off, where they're gonna start doing work, they're getting temporary water hooked up to the buildings, that was pretty much today. Excavating what they call the jacking pits, so the pits that they'll be using to do the casing crossings under the railroad. So it won't, won't look like a lot of activity happening except in one location, because that's really, a lot of that has to get finished and taken place before a lot of the utility work can progress further. So next week, again, the railroad crossing stuff will get started, and it'll probably be almost three weeks from beginning to end on the crossing stuff. First, they gotta do the sanitary crossing, the water main crossing, and then the storm sewer crossing. And that storm sewer crossing is a pretty big pipe. It's a 58-inch pipe, so I mean, a short person could walk through that pipe. It's almost like what they call a tunnel. So I guess that's all I have, unless we have particular questions on what's happened so far, or what else is coming up.
Any more questions?
Hey, Chris, it's Rick here. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Chuck. I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering now, when you go underneath the railroad tracks, that's gonna have all sorts of stuff. You're gonna have not only the drain, but you're gonna have electrical and some fiber optics and all that stuff. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's a total of five casings under the railroad. The three significant ones are obviously the sanitary sewer, the water main, and the storm sewer. And that's really critical to get all those in before they can start on the other stuff. They don't, two additional casings for the electrical and some fiber optic, they're a little less critical in terms of being able to manage the site, so, but they'll also be taking place after, after those of the three are in place.
And so the contractor, they started peeling it open today. Does that mean they put the drainage in, and then we go in and put then the, the four remaining casings? Is that how that works?
They'll be doing all of them. They'll be doing, in the order, they'll be doing them, the sanitary sewer first, then water main, then storm sewer, and then the two electrical conduits after that. And then the electric department will be utilizing, or actually, the contractor will actually be installing the wiring through the corridor either for the electric lights. And then New Prague Utilities will actually be just connecting to that wiring and where that's been fed to.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. So our people aren't going to be doing anything underneath the, or the railroad, the train tracks? That's all done by the contractor themselves, and then we tie into that?
All the work is done by the contractor, yeah.
All right. I was just wondering about this, the last thing here. You've got soft closures and hard, hard closures.
Yeah, actually, yeah, that, I'm sorry, continue, Rick.
Go ahead. I mean, you, you probably know where I'm going with it.
Yeah, and actually, yeah, and I think Ken brought up the, the, what we're calling the construction access detour map. Obviously, we're showing the detour, which is the yellow lines around the project, so the traffic that's pat needs to pass through town, the routes they can follow. But there's quite a bit of signing that's been set up for what we'll call localized access. As folks, traffic comes in, in from the west or the east, if they're trying to get into the downtown, there are signs that direct them to the business areas or main street businesses. And obviously, in the beginning, it'll, it won't be real, real difficult, because most of the project area will actually be open, totally open to localized traffic. It just won't be open to through traffic. So there is signings that directs people, if, for example, if they're coming in from the west on 19, signs that basically say north, north side business access, west, south side business access, and directs them to those blue, those blue lines that are on the blue streets that are on the, on the map here. And as the project gets further along, and more and more intersections become closed, then some of the signage will start to really become important. It won't be such a big deal right now this year, but it'll become more of an issue next year, so that, you know, folks will have, having to be following the signage and where the road crossings are at and things like that. So again, hard closures are where traffic cannot get through, cannot access anything along the corridor. Soft closures is basically just more has to do with where the localized traffic can go, but where the detours is bypassing around.
Okay, great, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Chris regarding the update on the main street project?
Chuck, this is Mike. That, Ken, can you flip to the next slide? If you can pull that up a little bit more and see if that gets positioned. We've tried to make sure we took care of the businesses on the west end, because effectively they're locked in by the hard closure at 19 and 21, and they're precluded from going through, obviously, the railroad tracks with the construction. So we have signage up on the highway and a street sign installed so that they can wrap around on Mill Street off Highway 21 to get down generally as close as they can by Skuzacex meets down there. So we tried to take care of that west end that was boxed in a little bit uniquely and different than most of the areas of the project.
Hey, Mike, or Chris, or whoever, is, is the car lot already been moved to a temporary location?
Yes.
Yep, that's correct.
Glenn had him there, Glenn, what, two and a half weeks ago?
Yep, pretty close to that, two and a half weeks.
Okay, anyone else have any questions or comments? I know there is no action to be taken on that, so thank you, Chris, for the update, and hopefully, the next meeting, you'll have bigger tales to tell us. So, next on the agenda, Mike, are you or Chris gonna take this one?
I put it together, but I'll let Chris talk about it, since he was involved in working with MINDOT and our staff on it.
Okay.
Okay, I just lost phone service, but I switched over to my computer audio. Can you hear me okay?
It's fuzzy.
Kind of fuzzy.
Okay, if you want to give me, you want to land or give me a sec? I gotta call back, otherwise.
I'll go ahead and just take it.
Okay.
What you have in front of you is a resolution prepared for consideration of amendment number one to the MINDOT agency agreement that deals with the federal, that deals with the federal participation in the force account for lighting on the trunk highway reconstruction project. If you remember back in January, we approved the agreement, and this one is an amendment because we're able to get it expanded, because we're now going to be able to include labor costs incurred by our city personnel and the electric department that weren't originally included. And so now we can get 80% reimbursement of their time that's used and invested in putting up the new streetlights. So it really works to our advantage. So you've got an amendment in here for, I think it's personnel plus some minor odds and ends related to that, with an amendment totaling just under $138,000. And so that takes the original contract, which was $799,520, that takes it up to $937,100. And we receive 20% of that for the purchase of the streetlights, and now our personnel and installation costs, and the other 20% is our responsibility, which we have built into the overall project budget. So this actually works in our favor, so we have to do a resolution approving amendment number one to the MINDOT agency agreement.
So Mike, is this part of the grant money? The federal funds that we're getting for this?
Yes, can you hear me now? That, this is Chris. That is correct. This is part of that, that federal grant, and we were able to get more out of it from, just based on there was some more, more, more funding that wasn't able to be used after the bid, so we were able to steer some of the labor costs, basically cover more, more of the city's costs.
Is it still capped at like $1,275,000 or?
$1,777,200, whatever, but we, it, it's based on eligible items, and we're not quite there yet, so we can't, we can't maximize, we haven't maximized it yet, but we, we took advantage of as much as we could, and that's where we're at right now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any other questions or comments?
No, this is Rick here. I'll move it.
Okay, I got a motion by Rick Seiler to approve amendment number one.
This is Maggie, I'll second.
Okay, I got a second by Maggie. If there's no other comments or questions, then we'll take a vote. Councilmember Seiler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf? Was that a aye? Bruce, nod your head. Yeah, okay, thank you. And Mayor Nicolai says aye, that amendment passes, that resolution passes 5-0. Thank you. So I think next on the agenda, Jim, I think you're going to present the first reading of the new UTV ATV class 2 vehicles ordinance?
Yes. I would like you to entertain a first reading. As we've been working on this, this spring, working with the group over at the Autumn Neighborhood that had inquired about getting this UTV ordinance together to be able to utilize UTVs and Class 2 ATVs on our roadways. In our June 15th discussion, we had several changes to our draft ordinance, where we discussed that ordinance at length at that time. Those changes were made, and the copy that we have has those changes in it. For the most part, under the definition of driver on page two, we just added with a valid driver's license to that definition. And then, under permitting, 7603, section one under a clause A, I just added in addresses of where the vehicle is stored if different than the applicant's home address. I just ran into that with the golf cart ordinance when we moved to issue permits for that. I had a couple people from out of town that applied for them, and I inquired, hey, what's your plan? You're just gonna bring it to town and use it whenever? And one of them said, no, I store it at a, a house, and I just, I actually use it for golfing to get to the golf course then. So I would just add that to our permit application, so that we can have an indication of at least where that vehicle is gonna be stored as part of that permitting process. Three of that same section on page three, under sub-three, operator permit conditions, on that, we just added that they're in good working order. I think that was part of the original. And then, the vehicle must not be altered with oversized tires or rims, or one or more lift devices that alters the vehicle from a stock vehicle. I think we discussed that a little bit about, I just didn't want these UTVs or Class 2 ATVs that have the oversized tires and several lift kits in them that generally would be utilized as a recreational vehicle. We don't necessarily need those on our roadways. So that would be a determination that, as we go through the permitting process, if it is a vehicle like that, then they could be made aware that it's not allowed on the roadway then. And on page four, under 76.04, occupants, we did, we added that last sentence. And this, this too was a part of Dan Vollick's email to me, where it just said to keep it, to keep it the same as the DNR rules, that maybe we should require helmets be worn by people under the age, well, our discussion was 16, but in checking the actual ordinance or the state statute with the DNR, it is 18. So it says, all passengers under the age of 18 must wear a helmet, Department of Transportation approved while riding on a, on the roadway. I apologize, but I reviewed this today. I would like to add to that sentence in the beginning of it. Three words, a driver and all passengers under the age of 18. Just to include that driver, because in the DNR rules, it, it talks about operators and things, and we didn't, didn't utilize that in our ordinance. So I'd just like to clarify that any driver under the age of 18, and then all passengers must also have a helmet on, if the council would entertain that change. And then the only other change that we did from the previous is under operation 76.08C, operators are prohibited from allowing any passengers on an attached trailer to a Class 2 all-terrain vehicle or UTV permitted under this section above while operating such vehicles on designated roadways and intersections. I think this, this again was important, just about public safety, that I didn't want somebody having either just a regular utility trailer and having people on it, or creating some sort of trailer that has seats on it that they could pull passengers with. This, this would allow for general use, and if, once we designate our roadways and Columbus Avenue would be designated as being able to be utilized, they, it could possibly allow them to utilize a trailer to go and dump branches and things then. But overall, those would be the only, the only changes that we made to our previous discussed ordinance. I think it's, it's a, a good balanced ordinance that would be enforceable, and also at the same time allow individuals with these vehicles to utilize them on our roadways.
Jim, just a, a quick comment question. In section 76 dot, dot 03, subsection three, B as in boy. So as the applicant is over the age of 16, should that read applicant is 16 or older?
Yes. Yep, I would agree with you.
So if we could okay that change for the first reading?
So the applicant is 16 years, is age 16 or older and provides a valid driver's license?
Right, yeah, just in case they get their driver's license on the day they turn 16, although maybe an hour or two, they'll be older than 16, but just, just for clarification.
Yes, I can make that. The applicant is 16 years of age or older?
Yeah, perfect, perfect.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, if not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the first reading with the changes noted in section, what is that, 76.03 subsection three, letter B, where we're going with 16 years of age or older, and 76 dash 04 occupants, the last sentence, we're adding all drivers and passengers under the age of 18 must wear a helmet. Are those the only two changes?
Yes.
Okay.
Chuck, this is Mike.
Yep, go ahead.
We may have some people that have connected in. I don't know if there's any public comment on the ordinance before you approve the first reading.
Okay, does anyone like to make a comment from the public on this? If so, state your name and your address, please.
This is Dan Vollick from New Prague, Autumn Avenue, and I think you guys did a great job. Thank you very much.
Thanks for all your help too, Dan. Any other comments? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion with the changes that were noted previously.
So moved.
So moved. Maggie.
Okay, so Maggie, I'll give you the second, because Sean, you gave the first, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Maggie Bass, to approve the first reading of the new ATV Class 2 and UTV ordinance with the two changes that I mentioned before. Is there any other comments or questions at this time? Okay, if not, we will do a roll call. Councilmember Seiler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
And Mayor Nicolai is also an aye, so it passes 5-0. Jim, I want to thank you for a great job on putting this together. And the next meeting, we'll have a second reading, and if this passes on that adoption, we will publish it right away, so hopefully by the end of July, or the third, third week of July, the ordinance will be into effect. So, thanks again, Jim.
No problem.
Okay. Next, Ken, are you gonna take item four, the Scott County Community CDA?
I will. Yes, the next item on the agenda is a request by the Scott County CDA. We do have Linda Janofsky from Scott County CDA here for any questions you might have, but what they're actually looking for from the council tonight is a request for permit fee reductions in the amount of 50% of building permit, plan review, park fees and water and sewer connection fees. And that is the same fees that the council has over the past number of years, from 2005 to 2018, reduced for Habitat for Humanity in homes that they have constructed in town. They've had seven that they've constructed over that time period. They've averaged about $5,200 in permit fee savings per home that they've, they've done. So in talking to the Scott County CDA, they're trying to get their community land trust program off the ground. These would be the first homes built through the.
You lost again.
How much did you miss?
After you said this would be the first homes?
Okay, this would be the first homes that the Scott County CDA is building with their land trust program here in New Prague. And what it does is it, this land trust actually holds the ownership of the land in which the homes are built, and it takes the value of the lands out of the equation and the cost of homeownership. And you can read the brochure for more details, or I could have Linda probably provide a better detail of their program. But one of the things they're looking for is community involvement and any assistance that the local communities can provide in getting this program off the ground. And one of the things, as I've mentioned, we've done for Habitat for Humanity is waive these permit fees in the amount of 50%. And based on talking to Linda, anywhere between $225,000 to $250,000 for these four homes that they want to build, would save them approximately $6,100, maybe a little less in permit fees, the bulk of that being from our sewer connection fees that we have. But again, that's the same fees that we've reduced. But again, that's the same fees that we've reduced for Habitat for Humanity, again, under the guise of affordable housing in the community. And correct me if I'm wrong, Linda, I believe you anticipate building all four homes at one time, once they are constructed. Their request letter written by Bill Jaffa is included in the packet as well. And these homes would all be located on Wentzal Avenue Northeast on land that the CDA has owned for a number of years and obviously at this point has not built on yet. I don't know, guys, had any questions for Linda or Linda, did you have anything you wanted to add to the request?
I just wanted to thank the mayor and council for their consideration of this. We're currently in the process of doing a funding application with the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. So any leverage we can receive for this will help us with points on that application. And your assistance with waiving some fees and the CDA's contribution of the land will leverage approximately, if we get our application funded, an additional $85,000 from the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency. So the support is just invaluable and makes the application so much more competitive.
Linda, this is Chuck Nicolai. So it, the project is, do you guys actually build the home? You know, like where Habitat Humanity, you know, people help assist who are going to take ownership of the home, you know, put in some sweat equity, I guess is, you know, the thing. But what, how, how is the program work, you know, with you guys?
Sure. So working with the MHFA, there is some design requirements for the properties through the funding cycle. So we'll, we're having an architect design the property so they have visibility and they adhere to green communities and some other design standards. So we'll have an architect develop the construction drawings and plans and then we'll bid out competitively for the construction. So there's not really a sweat equity component except for, you know, there'll be an unfinished basement that the homeowner can finish, you know, when they have the funds or their family grows. They'll be able to add a deck, you know, kind of some of those standard things that we do when you get into a new home. So the, it's really just affordability piece for making that more affordable so they can, you know, live and work in our communities.
Yeah. Go ahead, Maggie.
Thank you. This is Maggie. The homeowner leases the land from the community land trust. So in that lease, are, are there some responsibility of taking care of that property or limitations of what can be done with that property?
Yeah, absolutely. We do enter into a ground lease with them. There's a minimum fee that the homeowners pay to us. That's $25 a month and that's just to, you know, keep that relationship going. They do have the right to use the property as they would any other home. They can put it in a garden. They can have a clothesline or whatever else your ordinances allow. They are also required to be responsible homeowners. That means to keep the home and the property in good shape. And we do have some active sale follow-up with them. So we'll contact them at least once a year and just check in and see how they're doing. We'll periodically offer them some, maybe some classes on maintenance or different issues. We'll keep the door open if they need, you know, some extra budgeting help or financial counseling down the road because we have that within our agency, those services. So we do expect them to be good neighbors and good homeowners.
And how, how are these homeowners picked?
We do it a few different ways. We started off with participants in our rental assistance programs just because if we, if somebody in our rental assistance program is at that point where they're ready for homeownership, it kind of gives us a double whammy of we're allowing this family to enter into affordable homeownership while we're also creating an opportunity for somebody else to be on a rental assistance program. We only have so many of these clients that are ready for that point. So like I said earlier, we have a home buyer education services within our agency. We have a 12-hour workshop and I expect that most of our interest for the land trust homes will come from those attending that, that educational workshop. Those people are a little bit closer to knowing that they want to own a home or willing to, you know, go through the steps it takes, you know, that our counseling staff is just awesome. They can work with somebody for a couple months, you know, up to a couple years if they have, you know, debt cleanup they need to do or credit repair. They'll work with them until they are mortgage ready and can go into a home, not only affordably, but responsibly. So I actually expect most of our referrals for the land trust program to, to come from that education.
Okay, thank you.
I have a couple of questions too. Linda, how many other lots do you own? You've owned these for a number of years, Ken said. How many more in, in Craig?
Yeah, we actually had, let's see, I think it was six other lots in that same neighborhood. And so over the years, mostly back around the mid 2000s, we actually did some other first-time homebuyer programs in those houses. There's a couple twin homes and then there was a youth filled house and our last transaction was a couple of years ago. We built a, a single-family home, actually K8, which was the builder. Just a beautiful home. We did a, we wrote down the land again for a first-time homebuyer, so it, it made it a little bit more affordable. And it's just such an awesome neighborhood and beautiful background there that, you know, it's really been a pleasure working with the city and with the, just the, I love New Prague, I'm from New Prague, so it's a neighborhood that I really enjoy.
Well, the reason I ask that question is, is because usually when we, you know, I'm not opposed to doing it as we have done with Habitat for Humanity, but it was always like one house a year or one every other year. And now you're coming at us with four different houses looking for this 50% reduction. I just want to make sure that next year it isn't six and the year after that it's eight because this is substantial out of our budget.
Oh, sure. Yes, and these are the last four lots that we own. And the reason that we would look to do them in that same time period is because if we receive funding from MHFA, we have to use that funding within 20 months. So it will take a while for the construction drawings and actually the timeframe is the houses may not actually start construction until I think it's early 2022, just because we have that period of we have to do the construction drawings, we have to do the bidding, things like that. So.
Okay. And, and Ken, could you tell me the, the fees in the, in the packet, is, is that the total amount for all four houses or is that per house?
That was a fee estimate per home for the building permit, plan review, park, water and sewer connection, cents per home, which, which would be an estimated savings per home to them of about $6,100, which obviously is not revenue that the city is generating. And I said, like I noted, the bulk of that was for the sewer connection fees, which is the substantial part of that fee. Obviously, when you have the other ones up, you know, they add up too, but, you know, half of 7150 is the largest number for that sewer.
Right. Well, I did the quick math here and it looks like if for each house, it's about $12,312 and then 50% of that, so you're right in that ballpark was 6,100. So total, that's per house, so times four, it's going to be over $24,000.
Correct.
That the city is giving up. So that was kind of the basis of my question. If this is going to be every, every year, there's four houses or six houses or whatever, that was my only concern and I was going to recommend that we do, maybe we just do one of the houses that we reduce the fees in as we have done with Habitat for Humanity. But I'll, if it's, just seems like it's a one-time thing and we haven't done a Habitat for Humanity home for, I think, a couple of years yet, it's been two or three probably, hasn't it?
Since 20, 2018 was the last one.
So we're still kind of in that ballpark of one a year if we balance it all out. So, but I'm just a little concerned, what is that, that 24,000? I mean, we, how has COVID impacted our, our, our budget for this year? I mean, I know, you know, we're not getting any revenue on the, from the, the aquatic center or, you know, bits and pieces here and there from it, but I just wondering if this is the year that we should be doling out 50% reductions given that we're going to be facing some tough budget issues coming up here.
Well, I can tell you for new home construction, for the permits that we've reviewed and have been picked up, with the three pending permits to be picked up, we would be nearly at our total of all of 2019 for new home construction, within the first week of July here. So from construction and building standpoint, we're doing very well. And that includes obviously some commercial construction that we've had so far with the new QuickTrip and whatnot. I can't speak to other budgetary revenues, but from a building standpoint, we're having a very good year so far.
Okay.
Councilmember Ryan, this is Mike Johnson speaking that when you take a look at the first three items, the building permit, plan review and park dedication, excuse me, the first two would be coming to the general fund. The park dedication is a separate standalone special project fund. And then the water and the sewer would each go to the utility enterprises for those two items. And albeit we have some general estimates in there, you know, it's unknown. So there is, there is nothing from a building permit standpoint that is going to negatively impact our 2020 budget as it relates to this issue. And I think as you heard her talk about the, they're down to their last four lots that are available for this, that by putting it together, it hopefully will allow them to access some additional funding under the state programs to help get these built. And so from that standpoint, I think the overall concept of bringing in the additional housing under their program is really beneficial for the city.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we weren't setting a precedent by doing four at once and then all of a sudden it changes to six or eight or whatever, so.
I don't think there's any magic that the Habitat for Humanity is, is really quite a different program than what you're looking at here. And where they're at the end of the lots that they have available, we're not likely to see this coming from them anytime soon unless they're going to go out and acquire other property, which we don't know of at this, at this time. My question to Linda, because it wasn't addressed in any of the materials, where the Scott County CDA owns the underlying title to the land and the homeowner technically owns the house, do you know how the county assessor is going to approach market value for tax purposes?
The market value will, would be the same as any other home. Right now, with the land trust ground lease is set up, the homeowner would pay taxes for both the land and the property itself. So they'll be paying that full tax amount.
So there is no deductions or reductions because the CDA is the, the landowner?
Right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hi Linda, my name is Rick. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Hey, you know, I've, I've done some of these homes and I, and I volunteered and we made some really beautiful homes and the program worked out good, but what didn't work out was paying attention to them afterwards. It allowed some undesirable tenants to move in and while it didn't fit with the community and then, then we, then we were dealt with that problem, but that was 30 years ago. So I'm, I'm hoping that, what kind of follow-up do you do?
No, this is, the community land trust is a new program for us and you may have heard about it for a while. We've been working on getting it going and then we're, we're kind of slowed down a little bit by COVID. But this is going to be a very actively managed program because we are still tied to these property owners through that ground lease. So there will be at least yearly follow-up. We're going to make sure they're paying their, their taxes. We're going to make sure they're paying their ground lease fee to us. We're going to make sure they're keeping their house up properly because they will be paying into a repair reserve fund. So we're going to help them save money in case they need a new roof or new windows or something like that down the road. So we're going to be, it's, it's a little challenging. Well, we'll have a nice group here, but our model is more in kind of the kind of scattered site over the county, so it's a little bit harder than if you have like a whole neighborhood where you can, you know, do neighborhood activities and things like that. But the stewardship of the land and the, the program is very important to us. So we'll be very active and enforcing. So, so they are good neighbors and it's good project for the city.
I guess I'd like to clarify, I think.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mike.
That, I, I think the, the thing to reinforce is that, you know, this is not a low-income rental program. This is homeownership. So people are buying into homeownership and taking care of the house and the property just like all of us are.
Right, but it's, it's a pretty good investment. I mean, Sean's right. I mean, this is an investment for the city. The community is actually putting the investment into it. So he's right about, you know, setting precedents and stuff. I mean, it's good that the council questions this because although it is a good program and I want to help everybody out too, we kind of got to look what fits into this community, you know what I mean? So that, that's why I asked that question. And Sean, thank you for asking that about the budget and so I'm done. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Ken or Linda?
I have a quick one, Bruce, if you, if you can hear me.
Yep.
Mike, just to piggyback on your comments, the land underneath the house is not going to be tax exempt then. The land will be fully assessed and the responsibility of the CDA then, the property taxes on the land. Is that correct?
Linda, can you answer that? Go ahead.
Yes, it's customer and all the other land trusts around the metro and in fact, the whole state. The, the property owner is responsible for paying the tax on the land too. So they'll get the whole tax bill. And that's part of the education for them as they go into this program so they understand that yes, they'll, they'll be paying the whole taxes and yes, they'll be paying a ground lease fee and yes, there are responsibilities. So that, that will be definitely communicated to the homeowner.
Just to clarify for myself again then, are there two property statements generated and both of them are taxable parcels of land? Is that correct?
That is correct. It should show up on the, the property information card with the county, just as it does now where they break out the property and the land. So we're going to have, what we do is, it's not a separate PID, it's, we separate the property though, so that's where that ground lease comes in handy. There'll be two warranty deeds. So that's how we separate and then tie it back together with the ground lease.
Okay. So even though the CDA owns this, it will not be tax-exempt property?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the reduction, 50% reduction fee.
Rick here, so moved.
Okay, I got a motion by Rick Seiler.
I'll second.
Second by Sean Ryan. Is there any other further comments or questions? If not, we'll take a roll call. Councilmember Seiler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Nicolai says aye, so the reduction passes 5-0. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, Ken, I assume you're going to take this from the planning commission? And I think Mark and Melissa Elman are, are here if, if we have any other additional questions. Thank you for joining us.
All right, so I'll run through a PowerPoint here, a summary of the planning commission meeting from last week. So again, we have variance V4 2020 for a fence height along Colorado Street Northwest, the applicants being Mark and Melissa Elman. Little background, so they live at 300 Kennedy Avenue Northwest. They're looking for a variance to have a six-foot tall privacy fence, excuse me, that would exceed our ordinance limit. excuse me, that would, uh, exceed our ordinance limit, that whenever you have a fence within 30 feet of a, uh, road right-of-way, uh, that it can't exceed four feet tall. So we'll put up the map here and you'll get a better look at that. But, um, this particular area of the fence is actually along their corner side lot line. The front of their house faces Kennedy, their corner side, uh, which is still a front yard, faces Colorado Street. So they want a fence in this area for, uh, their dog, uh, to be contained and then also for privacy, uh, considerations on that side lot. Uh, without the variance, that's about a 30 by 46-foot area, uh, where they would not be able to have the six-foot-tall fence. That's almost a third of their backyard, uh, that would be then, uh, not able to be fenced in at the height that they're requesting. Uh, again, this would be a six-foot-tall vinyl privacy fence. Uh, at the, uh, meeting, we did only have one public comment and that was from the applicant, uh, Mr. Elman, who noted that, uh, in response to the question by Commissioner Meyer, uh, that a downspout, uh, on their, uh, southwest corner of the home would actually be outletting within the fenced-in area and, uh, would not be a concern uh, as the layout of the fence, uh, was in relation to the backyard and the drainage off that roof. So that was the only comment that we had. Uh, Planning Commission recommended approval, uh, on a five-to-zero vote ultimately. Um, we'll go through a couple of photos here. So this is the lot in question. We have Kennedy Avenue, uh, running north-south and then Colorado Street, uh, running east-west on the, uh, corner side there. Uh, zooming in a little better here for you. Um, so the area in red is where they're requesting their six-foot-tall privacy fence. Um, the lea, the green line indicates where, um, our ordinance limits, uh, the six-foot-tall fence to be. So anything from this edge of the home, and hoping you can kind of see where I'm tracing over the green, uh, towards Colorado Street is not allowed to be, uh, over four foot tall per the ordinance. So that area there, about a third of the whole backyard, um, is what they're looking to fence in. A couple of other things to point out, uh, there will remain a 14-foot boulevard, that will not, obviously have any fence or any encroachments in it. Uh, there's no, uh, sidewalk proposed along, uh, this segment of Colorado Street. So we'll maintain that full kind of buffer area. That's been a consideration and other fence variances, uh, in similar situations. This is just a, a sketch, uh, drawing of the same, uh, area we just looked at, um, just in a line drawing format for you. So it's really the area between the house and Colorado Street where they're requesting to have that, uh, height, uh, increased to six feet. Uh, one thing we pointed out at the Planning Commission, uh, there was an old, uh, preliminary plat that has expired, but I, I call out this old preliminary plat on the, uh, upper right-hand side or upper-left-hand side of the photo. Um, just noting that the house directly to the west, if it's ever built and developed, will very likely, um, not face Colorado Street. It will face towards, uh, the west. So you won't have any situation where you've got a kind of a fence in the front yard, um, scape, uh, looking down Colorado, because the other house will face, um, the other road, not Colorado Street as well. So really shouldn't have any concern with that. Uh, the photo on the, uh, lower right-hand side of the screen is the, uh, general look of the vinyl PVC fence, uh, for privacy that they're, uh, proposing to put up. And then just some photos here, probably the best one to look at is the one, um, in the middle bottom here. So just want to come off the, um, southwest side of the home. You can see that downspout that we talked about at Planning Commission. Uh, it'd come out towards the road, it actually would enclose the tree, uh, that you can see in the foreground there and then extend back, but leave, uh, 14 feet behind the back of the curb to that fence and then obviously continue, uh, to enclose the backyard area to the north. So, uh, again, the staff and Planning Commission's recommendation is for approval of the, uh, fence variance here tonight.
Okay, is anyone on the council have any comments or questions for either Ken or the Elmonds? Okay, if not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the variance.
This is Maggie, I'll second.
Okay, I got a motion by Mayor Nikolai, second by Councilmember Bass. Is there any other further comments or questions? If not, we'll take a roll call. Councilmember Seiler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Nikolai says aye, and the variance passes 5-0. Enjoy your fence.
Good luck, Mark and Melissa.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Next, uh, we have a, a similar or change of a preliminary final plat. Um, I'm kind of familiar with this land.
In the family at some point, I see.
Uh, yeah, it used to be my grandfather's house and then my aunt's house and for years.
Yeah, the next request is, uh, preliminary and final plat of, uh, Swereye Edition. Um, I don't know if we've got Doug, are you on the call tonight?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's Sue Ray.
Sue Ray, sorry. Great. Um, this is.
It's, it's, it's my, part of my middle name Rainier and part of my girlfriend's, uh, middle name Susan. So Sue Ray.
All right, I'll try to remember that next time.
Before we go any further, can we introduce, uh, so that the rest of the council knows, uh, who's participating in this, uh, from the property owner's perspective? Yes, it's Doug.
Yeah, Doug, as I just said, it was Doug Penn, the applicant.
Not everybody, not everybody, I don't think knows Doug.
No, I thought I introduced that, sorry. Um, so we'll go ahead here, I guess. Um, this is a preliminary and final plat of Sue Ray, uh, three-lot plat. Um, let's move on to the background here. Uh, so it's a pretty simple plat. Um, what is requested is a, uh, change from, uh, current one parcel on that property, uh, which is a .70 acre lot to be divided into three lots. Um, going back in time, uh, one of the topics that we talked about the Planning Commission was that there was actually four, um, lots that actually make up this parcel from Park Edition, which is a very old plat within the city. Um, some discussion came up about whether those four original plat, uh, lots could be still built on today. I did end up talking with our city attorney, uh, on this and he noted that at some point in the past, because everything's on one deed, one PID, that his opinion was that they are not buildable as individual lots, uh, from the original plat because they were combined into one parcel. So, uh, that is one thing we did talk about at the Planning Commission. And, uh, that was Scott's opinion as city attorney, that, um, in order to build on those, the development, uh, would have to have this subdivision approved or another subdivision, uh, for splitting the land further. So that's one topic I just wanted to comment on, uh, before we delve into this any deeper here. Um, within the, uh, parcel, so obviously there is one, uh, uh, home on the property that actually sits, uh, close to the corner of Lyndale and Second. Uh, that home is being renovated and will remain on the first lot within the development. So, um, that will remain, so that means that two additional lots would be created for, uh, new, new home construction. Uh, we did have a public hearing at our, uh, Planning Commission meeting in June on the 24th. Um, the common, uh, concerns from the two residents that had, uh, joined us on the meeting was that they felt that there should only be one new lot created, not two out of the property, uh, for new homes. Um, they also noted that, uh, they felt there should be a required driveway to Lyndale Avenue North from each of the three lots and not only have them rely on, uh, the alley, it's on the east side of the properties. Uh, during the meeting, um, staff did note that the lots meet the minimum lot size requirements, uh, that there is alley access and that they could provide access, uh, to Lyndale via driveways. Uh, but we didn't feel, and the majority of the Planning Commission didn't feel that that needed to be a condition to require the driveways. Um, and talking to Scott Riggs, he noted that we don't have a driveway requirement and it would be hard pressed to find, uh, finding that the council require that to occur. So he does not recommend that a condition to require driveways onto Lyndale be, um, part of the approval, considering particularly the alley access is available to them. Um, we already commented on the, the last item here, that, uh, the previous, four platted lots that make up this parcel are not buildable and, uh, this, uh, subdivision is required to, um, allow any new homes to be built. So, uh, just wanted to point that out again. And then ultimately, the Planning Commission did recommend approval on a five-to-zero vote, uh, with nine conditions listed in the staff report. Um, the lot in the overhead here, again, .70 acres in size. You've got the house in the corner that will remain. Uh, these two old buildings, uh, will either, um, be demolished or moved. Uh, potentially one of them could be moved onto the, the home, an existing lot on the corner there. That's to be determined. Uh, the preliminary plat drawing here, you can see the outline of the existing home that's being renovated and then the two old buildings there. Uh, there's also a well on the property between, uh, Lot 1 and Lot 2 that is being sealed. Uh, Doug, has that been sealed yet or is it still in process?
Um, Hart, Hartmans came out and they pulled the well pump out and then the dumpster guy put the dumpster in front of it so they can't put the cement or whatever they seal with. So, uh, that should be moved, I think, this coming weekend and they'll finish sealing it.
All right, and that was one of the conditions for approval, that the well be sealed for, uh, MBC requirement. So I just wanted to call, uh, that, uh, the council's attention as well, that that's in process right now.
Yep.
The lots do meet our minimum, uh, they're 65 feet wide, they're almost 10,000 square feet in lot area, so they're not small lots by any means. Um, and again, they meet the, uh, minimum, um, and some, uh, above the minimum for this, uh, zoning district. A few lots to, or pictures to go over here. Um, do want to point out that, uh, a lot of the trees and shrubs will be trimmed up along with the, uh, home renovation here on this existing home on the corner. Um, we'll go on a couple more photos here. Uh, again, these trees and shrubs along Lyndale will be, uh, trimmed and, and cleaned up a bit. Um, the, uh, lots that would be created north of the existing home are kind of off to the, uh, photo on the north or, uh, the left, uh, side of the photo here. Then the other photo on the bottom is looking north along Lyndale Avenue North. Just kind of give you a, a look of the other side of the street there and the homes that are located.
Ken, there is one driveway access, is that on the lot of the existing home?
Yes, there is one on the existing home, yes. And I think I have a photo.
Uh, Doug Penn here?
Doug.
Um, yeah, so, no, that is not. That would be the center of the three, yeah, that's the center lot of the three lots. The, uh, plan is with the existing home is we're going to cut a driveway from the alley, being it so close to, uh, I believe it's Second Street there. Uh, it'll be a short, you know, a short run from Second Street into the alley and then into the garage there. Uh, a lot of those homes do have, uh, garages on the alley and some of them have both. They have it on the house and the alley in that neighborhood.
Yeah, a lot of them have both, that is true.
Yeah.
So there's not, it's kind of a transitionary neighborhood, uh, where you've got older homes, you know, from, uh, much earlier 1900s into, you know, homes of the 50s. So it's really, really a transitionary to kind of a neighborhood. So it's a little bit all over the board. Uh, there's not like a, a real common theme and a common look, uh, there. But a lot of the homes do have driveways to the street and driveways to the alley with garages, um, facing both ways. Just a couple more photos along, uh, from the alley, looking back at the, the existing home and then the lots being created or proposed to be created. This one final look from Lyndale, uh, in the foreground here and, uh, looking at the lot. Uh, one thing that was pointed out with the, uh, possibility of driveways to Lyndale, there is some grade, um, increase from Lyndale, excuse me, into the lots, particularly as you get to the corner and that existing home. Uh, you could have, um, some retaining walls that would have to be put in place for the driveways to, uh, be provided access there. Not a complete hindrance, but just do want to point that out, that, um, that may weigh into some people's decisions too, or not to have a driveway to Lyndale.
Now, is there any water and sewer service to these properties?
No, um, they would have to install for the two newly created lots, water and sewer into the lots at their own expense. Uh, one thing that was pointed out, that Lyndale is proposed for reconstruction within the next few years. We don't have an exact date pinned down. Um, ideally, uh, you would have, uh, these homes wait for development until that point. But all I'm saying it is ideal for is that then the developer could have the street construction put in the stubs versus them having to pay to dig out in the street and do that now. But as far as street's concerned, they're going to get reconstructed anyway. So from a longevity of digging out into the road and, and repairing it, it's not the end of the world, it's just a added expense to the developer.
And the existing home has everything stubbed?
Already, correct.
Okay.
Ultimately, as I noted, the Planning Commission and, uh, staff did recommend, uh, the approval of the preliminary and final plat with the conditions and findings in the resolution that's in your package.
Okay, anyone have any questions for Ken or Doug, who's, uh, still available on the phone or on the, uh, meeting? No one has any other further comments? Okay, if not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the, uh, approval of the preliminary, preliminary and final plat for Sue Ray.
So moved.
Yeah, I got a motion by Rick Seiler.
This is Maggie, I'll second.
Ken, I got a second by Maggie Bass. Any other comments? If not, we'll take a roll call. Um, Councilmember Seiler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Nikolai says aye, so it passes 5-0. Good luck, Doug.
Good luck, Doug.
Thank you, yep, thank you very much. And for those of you that don't know me, uh, I can understand what it's like to be on the city council because I served on the city council for nine years, um, many years ago. Um, and it was, uh, it was a good education and I really was happy to do it. So, uh, well, thank you all for serving.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay. Jim, I think it's COVID time. Yes, we have, have joined us, I see.
Yes.
Yep, here.
So we have spent, uh, the last couple of weeks just preparing, um, for reopening and putting the plan together. Um, the COVID-19 preparedness plan for the city of New Prague, we've been working real close with, uh, Scott's office while we worked through that process. Um, we did get it signed for June 29th, 2020, so we were in compliance with the executive orders to have that in place. We anticipated that we were going to try and move towards opening City Hall to customers here today, um, but due to last week's concerns with, uh, some exposures that not only affected others, but, uh, our own employees with either exposures to people that were either tested positive for COVID-19 or, um, they were exposed to family members that may have been exposed. Um, so we kind of pulled back that, um, opening then. And we are looking at, uh, probably reassessing, see what happens with the executive orders for, that's due to expire here the 13th, next Monday, and see what the state does with that. If they do get an extension from the legislature, then, uh, we could probably revisit that, um, at the 20th council meeting, decide what direction we want to go. Um, there are some concerns, um... There are some concerns by, by employees just with this kind of flare up thing. So we are doing some retraining and making sure everybody's following the protocols set forth in the plan with cleaning and protective, personal protective gear that they can wear when it's appropriate. It just continues to change, I think our numbers are probably as average as any other communities in our surrounding area. But I think just with last week's little uptick in exposure to some, some of the local individuals, just put everybody's mind to thinking about, hey, this, this is real, this could happen, so what can we do to protect ourselves? So it just kind of reinitiates the urgency of taking care of yourself and taking precautions anyways.
Okay.
I have two questions for you guys. Number one question, I'm glad, is Scott here? I can't see him.
Yeah, he's here.
I'm wondering about HIPAA on whether we can inform the public when there's an outbreak like that, for one. And then my, my second question is what authority does a city have when it comes to making orders to wear masks and such? Because there's a question in the community whether we as a council can demand that everybody wear a mask. The enforcement, the enforcement behind it is my real question, what, how do we do such a thing?
I will jump in. As to HIPAA, I talked to Mike about that today, we had some discussions relative to what we can and cannot release, obviously not names, I have no issues with Mike or other staff summarizing, we have X number of employees out, they're, they're, you know, encountering COVID-19, whatever it may be, but you can't identify who they are and we don't want to make identifications to specific departments unless the employees have said that's okay. Now, Mike and other department heads will probably have to talk to staff to see, are they okay if they're in whatever department it may be to have their name released? The reason I say that is because it becomes very imperative if there are any type of contract tracing that needs to be done to determine if other city employees or other public folks have come into contact with these folks. So we do have an obligation to make notification of that. So it's, it's a, it's a line that needs to be balanced, it's not easy. I plan to talk to Mike further about that tomorrow and decide if we've got to come up with anything else relative to that. But right now, there is no issue whatsoever with saying we have X number of employees out. Identifying those employees would not be appropriate until we have any type of permission. So that's, that's number one.
Scott, if I can clarify, I think more the line of questioning from councilmember Seiler is that we had a local business that closed its doors last week because of COVID. And so I, I think, I don't want to speak for councilmember Seiler, but if I'm interpreting from my previous discussions with him today, isn't that what you're really asking, Rick, about something of that magnitude out in the community?
Yes, that and I, I, I want to know about the employee, Scott was kind of going in the right direction with that because what, what I'm thinking is like, well, if we say, well, there's three that are off in our PD or if there's five that are off in our electric or park, public works or whatever, you know what I mean? Can we identify which department? And yes, Mike, I also want to know about when you've got an outbreak at a business like that, can we inform the public that there was an outbreak and it was there and you may possibly have been exposed, type of that kind of information?
Okay, that makes sense. As to identifying departments, I'll start with that, I'd prefer not until we know kind of where we are with how employees feel about that. The reality is with the size of the city that we are here in New Prague, you're going to have a department of four and you're going to have four employees out and everybody's going to be out in that department, that's the reality. Everybody's going to know those employees are infected if that issue comes up. I don't think it's come up yet, but it could come up. As to notifying of outbreaks elsewhere in the community, as a public service, I don't see an issue with that whatsoever, that's not really a HIPAA issue for the city, it's more of a public service and public protection and the public safety aspects of that I think are appropriate. Are we identifying individuals or anything along those lines? No, we're not. But the reality is if there's an outbreak and there's a significant number of people that have been infected at some event or some place, having the public be aware of that so they can do whatever's necessary to protect themselves, families and others, that's appropriate and should be done.
I would want to also caution though that we worded very carefully that there may have been an exposure or versus a confirmed case versus those that are self-quarantined so that we try to avoid any panic because when you say X number of employees are out because, you have to fill in that blank, you know, there's a sector of the population that is extremely sensitive to what is going on and I would fear that it would get blown out of proportion.
Yeah, I understand that and that's what I mean, from a standpoint of the city, it's extremely generic, that's to a location, you're right, I, I, you know, word of mouth is probably going to cover most situations, but the reality is if we have a significant event that's occurred at some, you know, whatever it may have been, I don't know, some, a gathering of people, there was a protest or something along those lines and we know there are persons that have been infected, we have a public duty to let people know. Now, does that mean it's identifying individuals? Absolutely not. It's really, we know that's occurred, please be safe and, you know, seek testing or whatever is necessary to cover that aspect.
Okay.
And then the other was about, and if I've answered that, Rick, I don't know, but jumping if I've not, but I was going to go to the masks. I spoke with Mike briefly about that, I think the city's received some type of email from, from citizens or whatnot. The reality is the city has the full authority to issue an order relative to masks, there are at least four or five cities I'm aware of in the state that have done so. The governor's order does allow the city to take extra precautions and requirements and protections relative to the COVID-19 situation. Like I said, other cities have done it, they're, none of them are uniform, the ones I can think of are Minneapolis, Rochester, St. Paul, Edina's done it, and I think there's one other that is escaping me right now.
Mankato did.
Mankato's having public hearing, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think there's one other metro that's done it and I've heard a couple outstate that are talking about it and Mankato was one of them.
Well, for the sake of, you know, the, the numbers are going to start coming in from the 4th of July weekend, so I'm expecting that there's probably going to be some sort of alerts this week. I'm just wondering, Mike, is there, can we have a, an outbreak alert type of thing and maybe have a special city council meeting coming up where we can have public testimony and have people actually get their say on how we want to do this?
Well, I'll let Scott go ahead, you want to answer that?
Yeah, I, I will, sure, whatever form you want to do, at this point in time, the council, and it is the council, has full authority to do this. Arguably, the mayor does as well under an emergency directive that would have to be further approved by the council as you did before. But I would argue that right now, where you are, what you've adopted and what the executive order from the governor has stated, it would be better coming from the full council, there is no specific prop process, you certainly could have a meeting, have any type of public testimony you want to do, but that's not required, but certainly is not a bad idea.
What does the rest of the council think on this? Because what I'm thinking is, because I, I got at least four emails and a couple people have asked me, we got a situation where the mask, some people are wearing masks just to be blurrage written, so it was one of them things where it was like, well, I want to hear what the rest of the community says. So I don't know where the rest of the council wants to go with it, but I think we should at least do something.
Well, I think we all got the same emails, I also received four.
I mean, I stated my position on the radio today, I'm in favor of wearing masks in confined spaces within buildings and that stuff. I'm not in favor if people are in the public, you know, in the outdoors. And I'm just stating that position being that during the protest and things like that, we did not see a spike of COVID cases. So it, it does prove that it seems like if you somewhat socially distance and you're out in the public, it's less contagious. But inside buildings, I, you know, I feel that, you know, that's something that people should probably wear a mask. I started doing it the other day when I went to ACE, just because of reading of, of some of the issues that have happened at, at facilities that people did not wear masks, so.
And, and I'm okay with the masks in publicly owned buildings, for instance, City Hall. I, I have a problem mandating that store owners have to have their patrons wear masks. I think it's a personal responsibility, I think it's up to the store owners to set their own rules of who and who will not be allowed into the store. If they mandate a mask in the store, then it's posted on their door and people know. You know, I understand that this is, you know, this is real, but I also don't want to take someone who feels that they have to wear a mask and impose their will on everybody else because then those that are saying, well, I'm going to take personal responsibilities and make that decision for myself, that decision is taken away from them. I don't like imposing that on everybody because there is a sector of, of people, of population that think that everyone should wear masks. So I'm, I'm fine in public buildings, but I'm not fine in mandating store owners how they can open their businesses and allow their patrons to shop or enter their business. Everyone, if, if you're uncomfortable, you don't go to the store. If you're uncomfortable, you can order online. If you're uncomfortable, you get a better mask that's not only going to protect you but everybody else, such as an N95. So that's my feeling.
Sean or Bruce, any feedback from you guys?
I would have to say I'd probably go along with maybe. Personally, I wear a mask now, if I go out, I did the same thing at ACE, I was at the bank today, giving, changing a title on a car. And I think it's really up to the store owner to make that decision, I don't like mandating some, something on private property. That, that should be up to the, the shop owner. So I'm going to, I'll go along with what Maggie said.
My take on it right now would be that I might come to the same conclusion, maybe a different way to get there, I, I, I'm comfortable with mandating that if that's what's decided. I don't feel that mandating necessarily gets the best outcomes, I think what's being found out is, just because you have the law doesn't mean people are going to apply it. And I really would want to approach it more from the business standpoint, it's in the business's best interest to require it so they provide a safe environment where people are comfortable about buying their products and services from them. Wearing masks really benefit the businesses more than anyone else because it provides a safe environment. I mean, I would support a public hearing to hear what businesses and other people have to say about it and whether we just do something that's more soft, that just encourages it, would probably be more my take on what a, or a resolution might entail or include.
Okay.
That's where I was with it too, I'd be interested to see what you say, Chuck, but I was, I'm pretty much on the same page, but for the safety of our, our city employees, I, I'm just wondering if there should be a, I don't know, because this is all new to me too, guys. But the, the questions I got were if, if, what sense does it make for me to wear a mask if the people around me aren't wearing them? I'm, I'm going to get sick anyway, well, that's true.
Well, no, that is, because the masks that people are wearing are not going to stop the droplets from getting out or coming in. If you want to have a better protection than you wear an N95, a simple cloth mask does, because of the weave of the cloth, doesn't stop anything from going in or coming out. If you have to have maybe another filter, if there's a mask that has a pocket, you have another piece of material in there of some sort that acts as a better filter. So it's, it's a, in my opinion, it's a false level of comfort because I wear a mask, I'm fully protected. Can it help somewhat? Yes, it can help somewhat, but it is not 100%, it's not even 90%. So it's not even 50%, it depends on the weave of the fabric that that mask is made from. So, you know, just because a person has a mask on doesn't mean that you're protected.
I just want to clarify something, Maggie, because I think that's true, it's not 100% effective, but it does reduce risk. If everyone was wearing masks, it, it multiplies the benefit because it reduces the risk more multiplying wise. So it's not 100% effective, but, but if we had a public hearing, if we have a public hearing, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
I can, yes.
Yep. If you have a public hearing, we can certainly get that information out and see. I, I, I would be very interested in knowing what businesses would like to do because it's really, we're trying to benefit their interest in finding something that's workable and then the community as well, so. But a public hearing, I think, might be appropriate.
Well, and I hope we get a good cross sector of the public hearing and not just, you know, one-sided. And, and Bruce, you know, I, I think I agree that the masks may help somewhat, but there have not been any studies done of closed groups and, and determining that it does. Right now, everything is hypothetical and there have been no closed studies done of nobody wearing any protection and what may happen. So it, it is an unknown. And I'm not saying that masks might not stop something, but we have, have no numbers, we have no proof. It was the pride, the protests and the riots, it was, oh my gosh, we're going to see this huge spike. It didn't happen, at least we're not hearing about it. So, you know, there's, there's so much information out there and, and this is not a fantasy, it's not, you know, a mask isn't going to be all for all. I'm fine with public comment, but I am not fine mandating that everybody in this community wear a mask. I, I'm with you on the business owners because they're the ones that are being affected and I would love to have a somewhat safer environment for people to enter those businesses and be able to conduct commerce.
Okay, Mike, you're, go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to add the comment that city employees under our preparedness plan with this COVID-19 is we're requiring masks to be worn in certain situations, in certain environments, we've provided those. And so from the standpoint of trying to take care of what we're doing with our city employees, that's already covered, whether it's in PD, whether it's in public works, whether it's in the utilities. We've instituted practices and processes whereby masks are worn in certain situations and are being provided to our employees. You know, we've worked with Jim as the director of emergency preparedness as we've tried to take a look at this in all of our different operations. So we're doing that. We went a step further in City Hall, that we installed the glass separators at all three of the windows at PD, planning building inspection, and then over at the utilities finance area, we didn't go with just the, 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 the WISB Plexiglas that, you know, we went with a permanent solution to not only take care of that, but also deal with public safety issues. So we're already doing the things with our employees whereby in whatever situations that we that we have dictated in the appropriate departments, masks are being worn from that standpoint. So the action you're talking about doing within the public, we've already addressed the city employee side of things.
And, and I know you've done, done a great job with that, Mike, and, and I appreciate that in all the departments. Um, but my comment about public buildings is that if we have the public enter the City Hall, right, we, you know, it may be at that point a good idea to require masks. Um, just like any, any business, we would ask them to do the same thing too.
And, and, and that's a good clarification. And all I was trying to say is that we are protecting our employees and trying to make sure that they're taking care of where they're at. You're right, when we open City Hall back up uh, for public uh, to be able to come in or going into any other public building. Uh, Scott County is trying to make determinations of what they're going to do in reopening the library. Uh, our staff wears uh, masks uh, at the golf course. Um, but if somebody goes into fire or some of the other ones, uh, the, the discussion you're having is a slightly different twist that we don't have incorporated where we don't require the public and that would be something that uh, you know, as you take a look at uh, some type of uh, uh, revised ordinance or something, or simply it could be directed to us and we could change our own plan and require that uh, if the council felt that uh, that was an added benefit for us to have within uh, those parameters.
Well, there's no doubt you're right, uh, Maggie. You know, I, I could see your point of view. Um, 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 Mike, you have done a great job. I mean, uh, um, there hasn't been no major outbreaks. It's not like New Prague, it's just we're all dying here. Um, so I can kind of agree with you. Um, and nobody wants to mandate residents to do anything. I mean, that's not what we're here for. Um, however, um, we've got three, four apartment buildings that have a lot of senior citizens. And um, um, trying to get everybody to be on the same page, I mean, I'm trying to listen to the professionals on this. Um, a- and not any of the, all the other feedback we're, and opinions we're getting. Um, but it's still, this thing, there's no experience with it, so we have no idea what's going to happen. I'm just wondering about the preparedness and um, 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 I think me and uh, um, 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 Bruce are kind of on the same page. We're making a, a public hearing. I'd like to hear what the, the, the property owner or the business owners want to do with this. And maybe they could mandate it from their end. You see what I'm saying? Um, it's not going to hurt to open things up for some discussion on this. That way the government doesn't decide everything for the people. Let the people decide some of this themselves and let's have a hearing.
You know, I don't have a problem doing a public hearing. Um, the question is, you know, timing. When, when do we want to have it? This sort of thing. Uh, do we extend this council meeting to stay open and have a couple, public hearing within a few days? Uh, because obviously what we know now today is going to change within a week. Uh, you know, it could be something from the government.
Just today they, they announced that it's possibly airborne.
Right, you know, so it could be, the governor could come out with some kind of mandate, you know, within a week. And uh, so, you know, so that's kind of, because it's such an evolving topic or issue, you know, you can have a public meeting today and say, hey, we're going to not mandate mats. And then tomorrow the governor could say, I'm going to mandate mats, you know, masks for everyone, so.
I think I would like to wait to hear uh, what the governor's going to do on July 12th. Because isn't that when this, this current executive uh, order um, ends?
Yeah, I believe midnight on the 12th.
Right, so we should probably hear something prior to that from the mayor.
Yep.
Or from Governor.
Yeah, that was our thought on uh, just opening and what's going on. Um, that we would just hold off, see what happens with this executive order and if there is an extension. And then what, if any criteria changes with that extension then.
Yep. Well, that would be my vote.
Is everyone fine with that? Waiting to hear what the governor has to say, um, which would be what? Probably the end of this week, I would think, that he was going to make an announcement since the 12th is what, on a, a Sunday? So, um, and then if we have to,
I'm okay with that.
If we want to do a, a public hearing, what do we need, Mike? A couple of days or do we keep this meeting open? To give us some flexibility? Uh, you know, what do you suggest?
Well, it's, it, it, it's really a timing issue that as you indicated, we uh, we next meet uh, on July 20th. And so the intent is, is that what would you want us to attempt to get ready for? And what kind of public information do we want to put out if you're wanting to hear from people on a topic? And does that occur somewhere during next week? Or are you wanting to wait and do that on July 20th? Because obviously we're going to need to do some prep work to try to set this up uh, and to get information out so that people understand that you're looking to hear from them on certain topics. And how are they going to be able to weigh in either through email or participating in an electronic meeting? Um, that we, we haven't run a, a, a large, major public hearing yet uh, under this electronic meeting format. But uh, how do we get set up and make information available so that the public can actually weigh in?
Well, so can you and Ken start keeping um, track um, um, on how, what process you want to do that in? And then we'll wait till the 12th and find out what the governor's going to do. She hasn't said anything since the 29th. I just looked. Um, so we can wait till the 12th, find out what he says and um, is there any way that you can keep track of the numbers of um, um, infections here in the city so we can say, alright, there's uh, you know, there's 300 cases, it's time to close her down. Or you know what I mean? Is there any kind of um, numbering system that we have or a testing system that we have set up? I mean.
No, we don't. We, we don't have, we as a city do not have any specific access to any data or information on the city other than what we might be able to get either from Scott County or La Sure County. Um, I can't tell. It looks like we've got uh, uh, one other caller unless uh, Rick, are you in on two different formats?
Nice. I think Bruce is number eight.
Bruce is number eight.
Okay.
So we don't have anyone else in.
Okay, I, I had talked with uh, Linda Brodsky, the uh, Scott County Director of Public Health. And, and she's able to come up with the approximate numbers that have had positive test results that are attributable to the city of New Prague. I don't or haven't had that same information from the La Sure County side. Likely that could be uh, obtained. But then you have to take those numbers and obviously divide it into the population and you've got some general percentage. And so whether that gives you any telltale information or any better information relative to what is the status or the scope of the exposure in New Prague. Uh, I, I, I'm not sure, I'm not certain what that will do for you. Uh, but that's probably the best information uh, that we would be able to obtain is, is just some gross numbers divided into the population and determine what our percentage of exposure is. But I don't know how that helps.
No, it does help because what um, what we, what we can do is to tell the people, you know, we're, we, we do, we are working on this. This isn't dumb. Um, it's not going to, something's just not going to pop up out of the blue. I mean, we're all new to this infection. We have no idea what's going to happen next. Tomorrow could be a whole different thing. Um, um, so I, I'm with you. You know, I understand Maggie's point of view on this, that there, there, that it may be getting a little blown out of proportion because it's not, you're not seeing the big outbreaks at any of these gatherings um, since they started. So I, I'm with you on that Maggie. Um, and I'm not saying we should mandate it, but I'm saying we should open up the city for discussion um, um, from the um, property owners to see what, what the, you know, the, the actual businesses, what they want to do inside their businesses. Um, but that's all depending on what the governor says on the 12th. He's going to make the decision within the next week or so. So we'll see. I don't know. Uh, but I'm okay with all that. Thank you for helping me out.
Right, but I, I, I think, you know, when you talk to the businesses, when you got some businesses who are following the rules and some who aren't, then you're getting problems. And I, I, I think the example we had at that bar is they were not following the rules. They did not have their bartenders with masks on, you know, and we have it out at the golf course. Is it fun? No. But you know, if you're going to have people who don't follow the rules and don't have the number of people in the facility that they can have and it's shoulder to shoulder, um, you can mandate all you want, but if, you know, if you're not going to, there's no way to regulate it, i- i- it, it, it's a moot point. And I think um, the example of that one.
No, I'm with you. And, and, and just, just to admit to everybody, I was in that crowd of people. They were around me. I was exposed. Um, but I came home and stayed here. You know, I've been here ever since. So it's uh, um, there's no way to mandate people doing the responsible thing. And if you're exposed, um, isolate yourself until you're uh, you know, for sure you're not going to infect anybody else. I mean, I'm surrounded by elderly. The last thing I want to do is kill you guys' grandpa and grandma by bringing in COVID-19. Um, so that's what I'm worried about is that I'm going to get overconfident because now I've been exposed, um, and I didn't get sick, so. I don't know. I don't know where to go with this either, guys. I just wanted to make sure that the residents knew that we're taking just about everything under consideration and that we're not being narrow-minded. Um, and that, those letters and those uh, uh, stuff that we got on our uh, emails, um, they were, they were very sincere and I, I want to, I want to let them know that we're thinking about what they said. That was it. That was the only purpose of me bringing in that point up, so.
And I would, I would remind you as you take a look at that, is those are for individuals that have contacted you unless you've heard directly from others and our city population is 8,200.
Right, right, right.
You have to weigh the level of that just because a couple of individuals feel that way. Uh, businesses right now, they can choose to require masks or not. They don't need anything from us or the state. They can choose to do that on their own at present. Uh, the other issue you're going to have, if you go to the step of trying to do something is what is the expectation regarding any kind of enforcement if you try to put that into play? Who or how are you going to expect us to address any type of enforcement of that action? Easier setting.
I agree. I mean, in this, in the cities, they're having that same issue. You know, you can order the people to do anything, but you can write them a ticket. Um, there, and uh, I was telling you about this today in Jerusalem, they're writing a hundred and fifty dollar tickets for anybody that don't have a mask on. Um, and like, you know, then we were thinking, how are you, how are some of these people going to pay that? I mean, how's the enforcement going to go? Um, so I'm not ready to jump into anything like that. I don't, I'm just saying that, that this could be a dangerous deal, you know, we're not even at the tip of the iceberg, you know?
Well, in the other situation about any mandate, now you get people tattletaling on everybody else and so-and-so was wearing a mask. So-and-so was wearing a mask and that's just, you know, that could be
Free intention.
Tear our neighborhoods apart. Yeah.
Right. Division.
Well, where, where do we want to go with this?
I think we're satisfied with wait till, see what the governor says.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so we'll wait till we see what the governor says and if we have to call a special meeting next, end of next week, we're fine with that?
If necessary, yes.
Okay.
Well, un- unless we specifically um, adjourn this meeting to a date and time certain, I have to have, or I have to provide the three days notice uh, to call a meeting. So if we don't hear or know that till Monday, the earliest that we'd have that meeting would be Thursday, correct Scott?
That is correct, yes.
So then we're just about right up against almost the uh, the July 20th meeting anyway.
Yeah, so can't you just put it on the agenda?
We, we can, but the, the question is, and how we advertise that, is what do you want us to put on that agenda? Not knowing at this point what the governor's going to do here on the 12th or 13th.
So we're in a holding pattern till after the governor speaks. I mean, there, there's no, there's no wiggle room on that one.
Can we, can we address what we want to put on the agenda after we hear what the governor says?
I would think so. Why not?
Hold, hold on Scott. Are you meaning if we were to continue this meeting?
No, no.
Or on the 20th?
Push it to the 20th meeting since, like you said, if we, if we close this meeting, in the earliest we could have it is Thursday, the, what is that? The 13th? No, uh, Thursday, what is?
The 16th.
16. We could have a special meeting, but if we just push it to the 20th for a regular meeting, we can, we can address how we want to put it on the agenda before it gets published on that Friday.
Yes.
And I think that's probably the easiest way of handling it. Because we'll kind of know where the, the state sits. Uh, we're also going to hear some more feedback from, you know, you're going to hear what happened in Mankato with their public hearing. You know, uh, the problem I have with a public hearing is, is twofold is, is one is you're going, you might just get one side of the story. Or, or you're going to get people who are out there for a witch hunt and saying, you know, my neighbor doesn't do this and this and this. He's out and this and this and he, you know. And, you know, I don't want to get into that over something like, um, you know, personal safety or, or, you know, people's decision to make decisions on their lifestyle, you know, if, if you're definitely afraid of COVID, then you should self-isolate. And, you know, you, like Maggie said, there's ways to do that. You can have people pick up your groceries or you can do, drive up and things like that. You do not have to go out in the public. Uh, if you feel that it's that strong boat, so. But I guess we could talk about this forever, but are we fine with waiting to hear what the governor says? And then um, put something on the agenda?
For July 20th.
Yep, because even if we did a special meeting, it would be July 16th, which we're really not gaining a couple, you know, we're gaining two business days.
Agreed, Chuck.
Everyone agree with that?
Yes, I do.
Uh, this is Bruce. I just had comments if you can hear me.
Yeah, go ahead Bruce.
I just want to push back a little bit on your comment Chuck, um, and Maggie's maybe as well. I, I don't feel we have to have a public hearing. I'm not a big supporter on, on requiring it. But to, to say that it's up to a personal responsibility is like saying that if we didn't have speed limits, just don't drive. Um, I, I don't know that that's good. That's necessarily what we're talking about with wearing, wearing masks. We're looking at the interest of other people as well. When we have speed limits and other laws and ordinances and things too, so. Um, I just wanted to push back a little bit on that because I, I do think this is a serious issue and people are taking it seriously. And I think people are sincere in their comments. And I do think it's the best interest of businesses to create the best buying environment for their customers. Um, I don't, I don't necessarily agree. I would rather see us encouraging it. But um, I don't feel we have to have a public hearing either. But um, so I'm agreeable with whichever way we decide to go.
Okay. So do we have a game plan in place then? We, we'll wait to see what the governor says, hopefully the end of this week. And we will address it by putting, uh, if we feel we need to address it on, uh, an item on the July 20th agenda. And we will address it by putting, uh, if we feel we need to address it on, uh, an item on the July 20th agenda.
I've got it.
And we can, we can determine what that means in the agenda as we, once we understand where the, the state is going with it.
Right.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay. Uh, next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Um, my only question is, is the chamber still planning to do the check me out, um, event?
As of this time, the answer will be yes. We have had ongoing discussions with them and I think you can see in both the action by the park board and what we're recommending is that, uh, you know, there, there is a concern to do it, which is why we've added the conditions. And I think they're just waiting to see whether there's any different, uh, um, action taken by the governor on different sized groups getting together. But we've had conversations that, uh, if we had to make that call right now, today, we'd have to recommend against doing this. So I think they're gonna be very capable of making that choice. And she knows what responsibility they have that way. Uh, but that's also why in taking a look at it, that because it's in a public park and we're granting a on sale beer permit for them to have that is the conditions that, uh, are framed in this, that they have to comply with current and future executive orders issued by the governor in order for the event to occur in the park, that unless something major changes, likely this would not be allowed.
Yeah. Are we gonna allow our fire department to be involved?
I've not had discussions with, uh, Jeremy, but the, the same, uh, parameters would apply. And I'd work with Jim as the emergency preparedness director that, uh, uh, we'd probably be very, uh, sensitive as to whether we would based on everything we know at the present time.
Cause you know, we got the fire department, the utilities usually has a booth.
Bruce has already indicated that he will not be participating.
Okay.
So.
I think, I think those are the only two city departments that were involved in check me out is the fire department and the utilities.
And, and we're not, and we're not gonna have the highway project with Chris and Glenn.
Right.
So it's kind of a game time decision for them. And we've had the conversations. She's just trying to be prepared in case something changes, uh, and trying to scramble after the fact that it's there and it'll be kind of a game time decision. Uh, albeit she hasn't said, uh, exactly when, uh, she's going to, uh, to make that call.
Okay. I just don't want to make it look like we're approving it and saying it's okay to have this event.
Well, no, I think the language that, uh, we have in there from the park board and what we have attached to the, to the beer permit is that, uh, the event must comply with both current and future executive orders issued by the governor in order for the event to occur in the park. If, if we don't believe it's potentially compliant, then obviously we would work together, uh, both Jim and I, and have conversations with, with Brooke. And if need be, we would probably, uh, step in and indicate that, uh, that that would not be allowed. But I think the chamber is smart enough. They'll make that call themselves. Uh, and we'll just continue to work with them in that regard.
Okay. I'm comfortable with that answer. Does anyone have anything else in the consent agenda that they have questions on? And any of the minutes or claims for payment or anything? Okay. If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
This is Maggie. I'll second.
Okay. I got a second by Maggie Bass. We'll take a roll call. Councilmember Seiler?
Uh.
Councilmember Bass?
Aye.
Councilmember Ryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Mayor Nicolai says aye, so the consent agenda passes 5-0. We're at miscellaneous. Uh, Ken, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, nothing additional.
Okay. Jim?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. Barb?
No, thank you.
Okay. Uh, looks like, uh, Patrick, you, you're good?
I'm good.
Awesome. Michael?
Um, I, I've got one and it relates to, you, uh, may, uh, have read or heard a little bit about the CARES Act and, uh, uh, the governor has, uh, made a determination on, uh, providing federal monies under the, uh, the CARES Act or the, uh, Coronavirus Relief Fund, uh, uh, that, uh, has made monies available to, uh, to the state, the county, and, uh, to now some of the cities. And it, uh, appears on the surface that, uh, we are eligible to be receiving about $606,941, so just under $607,000. Uh, to learn a little bit more about that, last week, uh, Ken and Patty and I all sat in, uh, a league webinar, a league webinar, trying to, uh, undertake, uh, uh, a bit of an educational perspective on, uh, what's allowed, uh, what has to be undertaken to, uh, to comply with, uh, what the funding can be used for, what conditions, uh, that it has to meet, uh, and a number of factors. And so we're really right in the early infancy stages. Um, we can use things to help, uh, as it relates to the purchase of a lot of the PPE equipment, uh, uh, hand sanitizer, masks, wipes, cleaners, things that we've done to, uh, to deal with that. Uh, we're hoping that we can maybe use some of the monies to potentially deal with some of the, uh, election, uh, cleaning issues that we're gonna have to contend with. Um, the new, uh, uh, glass installations at the three office areas, uh, all of the expense in, uh, acquiring those materials and their installation, uh, we believe is potentially, uh, reimbursable, uh, under that. And, uh, uh, beyond that, we're kind of trying to, to look at brainstorming on other possibilities. Um, the areas that monies can be expended are on big picture items without going into a lot of detail, uh, are related to medical expenses, public health, uh, payroll expenses. And, and any of these categories have limitations, public health measures, uh, economic support, and then other. And the one area under the economic support may allow us to be able to develop, uh, a grant program to small businesses to reimburse the cost of business, business interruption that was caused by required closures. Uh, they indicate would also be an eligible expense, uh, and/or a program aimed at assisting small businesses, uh, with the cost of business interruption, again, caused by required closures, uh, would need to be tailored to assist those businesses in need. Uh, we're gonna talk a little bit, EDA, that, uh, Scott County has created a business recovery, uh, uh, fund project for the Scott County CDA. Uh, we're gonna take a look at that and I've had conversations today. We, we may be able to mirror that program and create it for New Prague. Uh, but we're just not far enough into, uh, knowing all of the details and all of the parameters to make sure that, uh, we're able to put that together properly. And so we would want to make sure that, uh, we retain all of the flexibility, uh, with some of the staff interaction to figure out what other areas do we believe might be eligible, uh, in order to be able to draw down these funds to, to use for certain purposes and that. And so, like I said, we sat through this last Thursday, so it's still new and we don't have a lot of details beyond that. But it'll be something that we'll be, uh, working on and will likely have to come back to the council, uh, kind of with an overall plan to get a sense of direction and a level of support, uh, from the council as we, uh, try to come up with, uh, uh, the various elements that we can, uh, expend these funds. Anything that's not spent by Ken? Is it November?
Yeah, November.
November, uh, would have to be turned back in. So, um, we've got, uh, a, a little bit of time, but not a lot of time to, uh, to, to find out how we can get, uh, creative and address, uh, all of the elements that, uh, that come with the requirements associated with the funding.
Okay. That's good. Anything else?
No.
Yeah. Well, I know we talk about an EDA, so I, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's definitely something we should look at. I was, I don't know if this is true, that if the money you don't spend rolls up to like the county level? Does that, have you heard anything about that?
As of right now, Chuck, I, I don't know that I can comment that, uh, you know, other than sitting through the webinar last Thursday, uh, I've not spent a lot of time other than, uh, the discussions, review that I did, trying to talk to the Scott County CDA and the people running that to see whether the, that program that they're doing would essentially meet our need if we wanted to try to do something with our businesses. And so, uh, that's where I spent my time just at this point, trying to get ready for that EDA meeting on Wednesday. Uh, and so beyond that, uh, I, I don't have a lot of answers. Ken, unless you know that question, answer that question right offhand.
All, all I said on the webinar was it'd have to be paid back to the US Treasury. Uh, but I did hear, Chuck, that it may go to the county. I don't know if it goes back to the treasury and then they divvy it back out, but, uh, US Treasury is what they officially said.
Okay. Thank you. I heard that it goes back to the county. Someone from La Sure County called me and, and was explaining, you know, something about the program and, you know, but that's something they said. So. Anything else, Mike?
No, that's it for right now.
Okay. Maggie, do you have anything?
Uh, just a comment from, uh, a citizen about, about two weeks ago. Um, she was golfing at our golf course. It was about one in the afternoon. And there was, um, some blowing of white foam. I don't know if this is an insecticide, uh, what it is. Um, but she said it was really windy and it was blowing at them. And she was disconcerted, um, because she is going through cancer treatment. So, um, she was hoping that these types of chemicals could be disseminated perhaps at a time when the golf course is, uh, not in use.
Okay. I'll double check with Kurt or Jeff and find out, you know, you said this was what, a couple of weeks ago?
It was a couple of weeks ago. She said it was about one in the afternoon. I noticed the same white foam on the, um, the soccer fields by the middle school. Uh, so I don't know what it is. I can only assume that it might be the control, perhaps. Uh, it's just a pure guess on my part, but.
Glenn, you look like you have. Most of those spraying units use a white foam and it's soap. It's just soap. And that's their marker to know that that's where they've sprayed and turn around and come back to continue to spray to get across all the property.
Okay.
Typically what the white foam is. Now, at the golf course, I would assume that that was the same situation. I honestly don't know that at the golf course, but when you're talking soccer fields, when we're, when we're spraying, um, parks and baseball fields and stuff, we use the same thing and it's distill.
Okay. Thank you. It's good to know.
Anything else, Maggie?
No, thank you.
Glenn, I skipped right by it. Do you have anything you want to add? Besides the foam?
Thank you. What's that?
I said besides the foam. You're the foam expert? The foam. Okay.
Glenn, we can't hear you.
I don't know. Forget it, Glenn. I was just dissing you.
I don't know what happened. I didn't.
Um, Sean, do you have anything to add?
Nothing.
Bruce?
Nothing.
Rick?
No additional.
The only thing I have to add is Jim, did someone reach out to you and talk to you about the policing policies? Um, remember we brought it up about maybe a month ago and then they?
Yeah, she did not, she did not make direct contact with me. No.
Okay. I just was wondering, cause, you know, she kinda was silent for a while, then she wanted your phone number. And then she says, oh, I'll reach out to him and that, it seems like it's kind of hit and miss with, so.
Yeah, she hasn't yet.
Okay. Scott, is there anything you'd like to add?
Nothing else. Thank you.
Okay. Well, with that in mind, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. I got a motion by my mayor Nicolai, second by Sean Ryan. So all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 Any opposition? All right. We're out of here. Thank you, everyone. Be interesting to hear the governor.
Have a good night.
Yep.
Everyone have a good night.